Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that they gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbardston Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines of this meeting can be found on the town website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via Zoom. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website a comprehensive record of proceedings after the meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. We are getting a little feedback. I don't know if everyone else is getting that. I'm not exactly sure where that's coming from, but it looks like it's gone away now. So again, I said that. All right. Well, moving on. So just first to sort of reintroduce. So this is our first meeting without for any of those who are watching now, who's nobody or at a later date. We have our temporary town administrator, David Nixon here waving and Ryan, our normal town administrator are under contract as a full-time town administrator is, is, is going to be away from us for a little while for, for various reasons. And you know, we, we're going to consistently and constantly wish him well. Hopefully he can check in as regularly as he hopes. So, okay, so moving on, we are, we are in open session. Usually, Aaron, we, we sort of ask whether or not anything has come in maybe prior to the meeting or, or, you know, during the meeting. I don't see anything in the chat, which still looks disabled, to be honest. So anything anyone knows about open session or is anybody here for open session?
Sandra, if you would like to do your presentation for the playground, that would be wonderful. I just need to have you unmute yourself. And if you'd like, I am able to put those images up on the screen if that is okay with the chair.
Yeah, sure. Let's just let Sandra set the table first just to make sure that's what she wants. If there's anything else we want to get to, but Sandy, you have the table here.
Okay, so I wanted to include the board of selectmen and I talked to Ryan about this a little bit about bringing you all up to date. I know we had our joint meeting back in February, but bring you all up to date as to where we are with this playground project. And it is moving right along. I did send everyone the images, but if you don't have them, she can bring them up if she wants. Basically, we've been very, very happy with the vendor we have chosen so far. Very, very informative, very patient, very helpful being a volunteer board and really relying on his knowledge to kind of help us navigate some of this. So what we're looking at here is our most recent plan, but we are meeting tonight to see if we can actually improve this plan a little bit more because we have found that we have a little extra money, which is nice. Their budget came in lower than we expected. So it was really, really nice to maybe be able to add a few more things depending on the size as well though, because obviously we have a set amount of space. So the other image, the first image is the drawing and I wanted to point out to you, it doesn't matter. As you can see, we're trying, we're bringing everything. This is, has to be ADA compliant and this path that you want to see kind of scrolling through the middle of it, that's all going to be a rubberized surface. We are looking to move the entrance or actually add a new entrance over here to the right. This entrance here will coordinate with the handicap entrance of the basketball court. So it only kind of made sense that both entrances were together. So this, all this area in here is going to be a rubberized path, which is going to allow people with any kind of mobility issues to get to an ADA swim, swing. This round thing in the middle is an ADA. It's called a spinner. These are sensory equipment along the way, three or four different sensory play things along the way. The seesaw is also ADA compliant. And this dome over here to the far left, we, yep, we just included that and we just, where we had a little extra money, we made this rubberized path bigger and our thinking was it will give kids with any kind of limitations, the ability to access much more of the playground than, because originally we cut it off like right where that transfer station is to like the, the ramp there. Correct. So this will allow more space and, and more freedom for children to access more areas of the playground, which we thought was very important.
So just a quick question, pip, does that mean poured in place? So this is like a Ford, you know, monolith?
Yeah, it's a rubberized surface. And the other area is going to be the manufactured wood fiber. So yeah, so that's what we, that's what we've decided. We've had a lot of discussions about it because we've heard different things about mixing the two, but kind of the bottom line was we don't have enough money to do the whole thing in rubberized. And, but trying to make as much of the playground accessible was really important to us. We did consult with, you know, local people who have children who have physical disabilities and they said these playgrounds, they really work well. So, so that's kind of where we're at. And if you look, I know you can't see right now, but if you really zone in on a lot of this, there's a lot of place stuff on, on this thing, a lot of sensory things that are along the bigger piece. Like there's drums and there's like sensory boards all along this big, I don't know, this big apparatus, the big one. So yeah, so I'm, we're, we're very excited about it. We're very happy that the town supported this project with the CPA funding and it's going to be nice to see it all, all come through. So we also will be getting new fencing. We would like to move the handicap parking over here because the handicap parking is way on the other side of the playground. So we do need to talk about how, how we go about doing that. I don't think that's going to be a difficult thing. But we will have to talk about how to get the, the lines repainted. But we have the lines painted in the past.
Well, this is pretty awesome. And so asking for a friend, is there a age restriction?
No.
Okay, so sounds good.
No, no. And, and it's amazing, the regulations, like, you know, like we have to do tiny little things and based on regulations, you can't do that. Oh, okay. I don't know. There's a lot, there's a lot to it. There really is. So this actually is a 3D image of the playground with the path, but this was before we extended the path over to this dome. So this was the prior, the prior look. And after tonight's meeting, when we finalize everything, he's going to give us a new 3D that will show this rubberized path coming all the way around.
So where are you at with like procurement, right? So you know, that, that piece of things.
So that's my next big question. I don't know. I mean, I, Ryan told me to pick the vendor and he'll take care of it. And so I do know that David did send me a contract to look at, but I'll be honest, I, I don't negotiate contracts. So that's kind of why I'm coming to you guys too. Like what's the next step? Once we finalize this design, who does it go to and who signs all this stuff?
Okay.
All right. So the design was done by the, by somebody on the state bid, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we need to have a contractor. Put in, we have cost estimates and we need a contractor to do this. So that would fall under 30, 30, 39M.
So they, I saw on their quote, but they quoted the installation. Is that right?
They're doing everything, everything except for demolition.
Right. So we'll, we'll have to just whatever. Have you sent us the contract already? Have you sent it to David?
No, David gave me a blank contract.
Oh, blank contract. Okay.
Yeah, we, we do have a quote, but because we're just finishing tonight and tweaking it a little bit more, that quote is going to change a little bit. But he did give us a quote for everything so far.
All right. So there are rules on, on, you know, proprietary use, meaning, you know, how many quotes you have to get and all that. And so that's what we're going to have to just make sure we understand some of that has to do with how it's funded and all that. So there's a few questions we have to answer, I think, before the next step moves forward. And that's what we'll, we'll research. Some of the regulations that David just mentioned there are things that we're going to have to fully understand before we take the next step.
Okay. So when I was working with Ryan, because I asked him if I had it, I, we actually did work with three vendors and then we chose one is how we did. And all the vendors were on the state bid list and they all created a design and we talked to all of them and we chose which one we wanted to work with. Ryan, all the way told me that was fine, that nothing had to go up to bid or any of that. So.
Okay.
So.
So that's my understanding as well. So this is already covered by the state bids. So we don't need to, to bid this out as a municipality. I will double check that. But I think we're at the stage where we are signing contracts and I'll, I've been, be working with Sandra and also our insurance agency to make sure that we have proper coverage in place and legal counsel, obviously.
All right. Great. We're pretty close then. What do they say the lead time in this thing is? It's got to be a while.
Well, no, actually it isn't. They, so the thing that's really nice is once you choose your design, they actually go and build your specific design. So in other words, these pieces aren't sitting in a warehouse somewhere. They actually build it to your specifications. And he says it's a 30, 30 days. So once we put in our order, we should have it in 30 days. And so he's like, you know, if you're not ready to install it in 30 days or have them install in 30 days, that's fine. We just work with them on a timeframe. But definitely, definitely I'm hoping 60 to 75 days tops.
Did you talk, I don't know, has, has Travis reached out to you yet or have you spoken to him?
Um, well, we've spoken to him in the past and we have talked to the board of selectmen as well about Travis didn't tell me that he can demo everything and haul all the gravel out.
Yep. No, we volunteered him for that. So it sounds good. I was just hoping that got related to you. So, okay, great. So it's, doesn't feel like we have any missing pieces that you see right now besides obviously the contractual stuff?
Nope. I just have a kind of a question to ask and get people's opinions on. So right now the Rainbow Playground has a beautiful sign up there from all the people who donated to the original playground. Is there any feeling that we have to continue to thank these people or is it like, you know what, it's been 30 years, we're hauling that down and taking it away and putting a new sign up?
I think so. I mean, you know, everyone can have their own opinion here, but I think that, you know, the, 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 you know, thanks was, was obvious for a long time and, and a plenty, you know, and we've sort of moved on. So I, I don't know. I, I, I don't, I don't have any sentimental reasons or I can't think of a real good reason why to, we should keep that with a whole new system out there.
Yeah, I just wanted to check before we like, didn't thank them again. But I do know with CPA, we actually have to put a sign up that says this was CPA funded too.
All right. Sounds good. So maybe what we could do then, just to make sure everyone's got a chance to take a look at it here, is when that sign sort of gets proofed, we can, you guys can send it to us. And so maybe we could have a comment on that. And if somewhere it makes sense that, you know, this is an upgrade from the Friends of Hubbard's, former Friends of Hubbard's and Rainbow, you know, something like that. In case there's an opinion that, that, that wants to be heard during that timeframe. Can we do that?
That's perfect.
All right. Okay. Well, awesome. This is going to be very exciting for you guys. It's a big project.
It is a big project. We're very excited. We're excited it came in under budget so far. Well, it will come in under budget. So we're trying to leave, I don't know, you know, you know what they say about contractors, but this guy should be held to the contract, right? So, but we're trying to leave like no more than $10,000, maybe $8,000 wiggle room, just in case something happens.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, anyone have any questions for, for Sandra on this?
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thanks a lot, Sandra.
Bye. Take care.
Bye to you. Okay. Anyone else for open session? Doesn't appear that there is. All right. We'll move on then. So we've got our, our, so also I probably should have said that before too. We have a new agenda, you know, we've got the, the two new, you know, newbies on board here blowing everything up. So we have, we have a new agenda format, which is, looks, looks excellent and efficient. Just in case anyone's looking at it and sees it being a little different. So it, it does appear to give us more information to be able to move things along, although, you know, honestly, this is going to be a very quick meeting anyway. But so item two is, is a general consent. So this is, this is the minutes approval from, from March 1st. Aaron, do you have those that you could just call up for us?
Oh, I am sorry. It's not one thing that I did grab. Let me see if I can quickly get it, but it was giving me a problem earlier. Give me just a moment, please.
All right. More than anything, I think, you know, we've had a chance to probably look at them, but just to refresh everyone on who was there and who wasn't usually something that we do do. March 1st, while you're doing that, I'll filibuster for a sec. So who was there much, was everyone there March 1st, our last meeting?
Yes, they were all there. And unfortunately it's giving me a real fit trying to connect to Google right now. So I do apologize. Let me see if I can't grab it another way. Okay. Hopefully it will pop right up.
All right. Last chance.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't realize that this is something that you did. So give me just a minute. And of course it's taking forever. And I have a much faster connection here at home than I do at work. So this is great. All right. You should, I'm hoping, be able to see it if it doesn't throw another fit again at me. And is it going to? All right. Let's see if that will work. Am I at the right section?
You are.
Excellent. So what, let me move if I can move me off. Well, nope, that's the 15th. Why is it showing the 15th? Hey, okay. This is crazy. I do apologize.
Don't worry about it. So I, I don't think we actually fully need to see it. I was just mentioning it. So I don't know. Does anyone have any issues with the minutes or is there a motion to, to take action on?
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to, to March 1st.
Second the motion.
Okay. Seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote roll call. Dan, yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Sounds good. All right. We are at announcements. All right. We'll start with the frozen assets there, Katie.
All right. So it is still standing. I can't believe it did not drop last week. I thought it was gonna. I was watching it like a hawk. I think I went there at least four or five times a day. And the thing is still up. So we're waiting. It, everything kind of froze again. It is leaning a little bit backwards and the ice is very thin. It's very dark ice. So I would not trust standing on it at all. I can't believe it's still up, but we're waiting. So I keep driving by at least once a day and we keep checking. So warmer weather is coming. We'll have to see how long it actually takes, but I'm going, I'm, I'm thinking it's going to be less than a week before it drops.
Do you, do you cross-reference the list at all? Are you going to wait until it happens before you?
No, I haven't even looked at the list. I don't even waste my time with that because there's so many numbers on there. I would go crazy. Like I'm not crazy enough. For the love of God, let's not make it worse. So. So yeah, so frozen assets, we're still driving by. I'll take my daily and yeah. So the rest of it, I have a laundry list of upcoming events though, which I am very excited about. So first off, we have been permitted parks and recs to have the Easter egg hunt with the Girl Scouts. So that is super awesome. We're going to have the Easter egg hunt on April 3rd at the rec field. It's going to rain or shine because it's the day before Easter. The thought behind this was it's Easter's really early and we need the fields to kind of dry out and not be so muddy because Easter egg hunt in the mud is no good. So hopefully it will be a nice warm morning. It's going to be 11 AM. Like I said, rain or shine, April 3rd, and I'll, we'll start sending out some more details about that as we get a little bit closer. We also have a electronic recycling day, which is April 10th from eight to noon at the rec field. So if you guys don't know, normally we have that with the town wide cleanup and the bottle and can drive, but apparently the electronic people were booked that day. So it got scheduled a week early, but at least it's an option. So people, if they have electronics to recycle, there'll be a fee and all those details will come out, but at least people can bring them to the rec field and have their electronics recycled. And usually that goes with the Boy Scout. So it's a Boy Scout fundraiser. So you're doing good all around. The next weekend, April 17th is the townwide cleanup and the bottle and can drive for Girl Scouts. Again, there'll be a dumpster out there. Laura police spearheading that one. That will be from eight to noon as well. And it'll be like a drive-through, you know, you drop your bottles and cans off to the Girl Scouts, drive down to the dumpster, throw all your trash in. Laura may have some kind of trinket. I'm not totally sure to, you know, a little memorable thing, like a keychain or something that says Hubbardston Townwide or something. Who knows? She's usually got something going on, but that's the day everyone bring all the trash that you picked up on the nasty streets, all those nip bottles and beer cans that people just chuck out their window. Bring it up and get rid of it. Now this one.
Let's keep, keep Hubbardston beautiful, right?
Yes, yes. Keep Hubbardston beautiful, the townwide cleanup. Yes. The next one, I just want to put a little bit of a sprinkle out there because nothing's set in stone yet, but there's a possibility of something going on on April 24th that will be a small little fair at one of the farms that might be something to find some spring items or maybe some really good Mother's Day gifts. So that will be coming out soon, but hopefully that's in the works too. And that again, will also be in April. Then I'm also collecting applications for the Hubbardston Fair and Field Day, Hubbardston Fair, June 12th, rain day of the 13th, nine to two. The field day, I'm working with the Lions, September 18th with a rain day of the 19th from nine to three at the rec field. And the dingy dash, start building your boats, start collecting your cardboard, get your ideas going because that's August 28th at 10 AM with a rain date of the 29th down at Brigham Pond. So we have some stuff scheduled that at least everyone will be able to get out and enjoy some nice weather, hopefully on all these dates, but be able to do something that is with other people, you know, and not be trapped in your house, all fearful of COVID. We can all get out with our masks on still and everything else, but we can have something to look forward to for this year. So I'm, I'm happy with, we have a very good lineup going on so far. So I'd like to thank everybody that's working with me on all these options. So, but anyway, that's what we got going on. So it's a big list.
Is that it?
Right now, yes. I might have more. I only know. It's getting all excited.
Yeah. No, that's fabulous. Okay. Well, so I, it just because I'm interested, how, has there been, I, I don't know how long you've had it open and I can't remember if you've said it already, but has there been, you know, some, some, some vendor interest already?
Oh, I already have tons of applications. I've been picking up at least, at least once or twice a week I go into the offices to get them. And yeah, so I've, I've got a bunch already going and I have people emailing me and stuff like that. But yeah, if you know any artists or, you know, crafters, vendors, direct sales, small businesses, you know, fundraisers, I'm all open to whatever. Start spreading the word. We'll, we'll, you know, have a nice day. And this also gives, a lot of these places that set up, they are local small businesses. Not only are they from Hubbardston, but they're also, you know, surrounding towns. And these people like this is their, you know, some of them, it's the way that they make their money. You know, or it's their side hustle because they got kids and this is all they can do. So it's, it's the way they bring in income. So it's, you know, if we don't give them a spot to shine, I don't know what else these guys are doing. You know, there's not really too many options for these people. So.
All right. Thanks. Anyone have any, anything else to add to this item? No? Okay. Thanks, Katie. So the next item we have on under announcements anyways, is, I may have already done it, which is the town administrator appointment and executive assistant, Erin Canton, additional hours. So I don't, David, is there anything you want to say here?
So, so it's been a pleasure working with Erin and Ryan very wisely decided to increase her hours subject to the select board approval. Increase her hours from 18 hours a week to 24 hours a week. Same rate of pay, 1959 an hour. And that way she can support the work that I have to do that Ryan was doing in 40 hours a week. I'm trying to do in 20 hours a week. So this is a very wise movement. There's three piles of money where this, the, the additional funding would come from. So we have enough to cover this through the end of the fiscal year.
All right. Do you, I, do you need anything from us or is this just a notification?
To be squeaky clean, if you could take a vote to approve, that would be, that would be fine.
All right. Someone want to make that motion? To approve the additional hours?
I'll make a motion to approve the additional hours for Erin Caton, Caton, or is it Catton? As presented.
It is Caton. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Seconded. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we'll vote roll call. Dan, yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
And Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Next is new business, room number four. We have some animal inspector of animals appointments here. So a few of them, can, can, can someone just sort of read them off to us? So we, we know what we're, we're in for?
Sure. So what we have here on one sheet, these are the two that actually came from, and I apologize, where did my screen share go here? Let me try that one more time. There we are. So the first one is for Cheryl Slack. We actually have three animal control officers who are also inspector of animals. What you are doing right now is approving the inspector of animals. This is a slightly different time schedule than your normal appointments, and that is because the inspector of animals is governed by the state. So it is always a May to April, in April to May. No, I apologize, May to April timeframe, which is why you're doing this a little off, off schedule. So the first one, it's the same three people that you've had already. The first two are Cheryl Slack. And then if we scroll down a little bit, you can also see that this is Kristen Salerno. I apologize if I'm butchering these names. They are both out of Gardner, who we have an original contract with on a separate sheet, and that's only because the state did not happen to have that person's form is give me this one right here. And I had to kind of create this. So it looks a little weird. This is Alana Misserv, Mayserve. I'm not sure if I'm saying that correctly. It's following the exact same format. Also again, out of Gardner, who you happen to have a contract, regional contract with. So again, this is just for the inspector of animals and different from your normal timeframe, because this is governed by the state.
All right. Great. Thank you.
We are recording.
Sounds good. All right. So we were at the, the motion, waiting to, to do some motions there for the approving the, the inspector of animals. So want to do one, these one at a time?
We'll need to see the names again and.
I got it. You want to do them one at a time, Dan, or all three together?
One at a time, Pat, please.
All right. I'll make a motion to appoint Kristen Salerno as the animal and is inspector of animals for the period of May 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2022.
Second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Okay. We'll vote roll call. Dan, yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Katie unanimous?
No, I'll make the motion to appoint Cheryl Slack as inspector of animals for the period of May 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2022.
Second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we'll vote roll call. Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll also make a motion to appoint Alana Misserv as inspector of animals for the period of May 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2022.
Second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote roll call. Dan, yes, Katie? Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
All right. Sounds good. Room number five, old business. So this is the US Census Government Unit Survey. David, what do you want to talk about here?
Well, we, we took a look, Aaron took a look at the, the document. This is really administrative in nature. Oh, we, uh, we took a look, Aaron took a look at the, uh, the document. This is really administrative in nature. Um, it, they're just collecting information about the, uh, the town so that they can use it in a database at the national level. There's no reason not to do this. There's no reason to do it. Um, as an administrative issue, I can handle it if you wish.
Yeah, um, sounds like, you know, I, I don't know what it does. If we do, uh, want to, it, it, somebody would be making a motion to participate in the two thousand twenty-one government unit survey.
I'll make the motion. And again, what was that, to participate in the?
Two thousand twenty-one government units survey.
Thank you. I'll make the motion for the town, for us to participate in the two thousand twenty-one government unit survey.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded. Um, any discussion? All right, we'll vote roll call. Then, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous? Uh, item, room number six is the town administrators report. Anything you wanna talk about here, David, in your early times here?
Early time here, just trying to get, get on top of all the projects. Uh, the first bit of information I have for you is for the latest developments in, uh, the pandemic, COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, Congress passed and the president signed the American Rescue Plan Act, which provides, among other things, monies to municipalities, uh, that have been affected by the pandemic. Uh, Hubbardston, these are unofficial numbers, so they, uh, subject to change. But Hubbardston looks like we're going to get one million four hundred twelve thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars in two segments, one in twenty twenty-one and the other in twenty twenty-two. And that needs to be spent by twenty twenty-four. It can be used, we don't have the, uh, the information from the US Treasury as to the actual uses of the, uh, of the money, what's a legitimate use of the money and what's not. Um, but in general, we can use this money for reduced or lost revenues due to the pandemic to fund COVID nineteen-related co- costs and support impacted households and businesses. Invest in economic recovery and development, uh, invest in water sewer and broadband infrastructure. I think broadband is probably something, given that we just had this hiccup in Zoom, we probably wanna spend a little bit of time thinking about that. So, again, unofficial numbers, um, I think they're pretty solid. Uh, we haven't got the directions from the US Treasury. But, all right, we have everybody here.
Uh, we're missing Chris.
We're missing Chris.
Did anyone else get a message when you, when we got booted off saying that someone else had opened up a, a new meeting on this account?
I did.
Yes. I'm not sure why.
Parks on this account?
Um, I didn't see anything when the meeting was originally booked. There was actually nothing there, so I'm not exactly sure what the problem is now. I know that Parks does have a meeting planned for this evening, but, um, not when we originally set it up. So, I'm not sure what the deal is that's going on here.
All right, well, if my calculations are correct, we have seven minutes and twelve seconds until we get booted again.
Excellent.
So.
I'll move quickly then. So, anyways, uh, those are the general parameters for this, uh, one point four million dollars. Um, we should start thinking about the strategic use of that money so that we can maximize, uh, the benefits to the town of Hubbardston. Um, obviously, Ryan will be back in the saddle by the time the second slug of money comes in. Um, so we'll keep him in the loop as to what, uh, what ideas we may have. Um. Annual town meeting is coming along. I've prepared, uh, with Ryan's help, a draft warrant and I'm working on the motions and explanations for each article. Uh, the center school roof, uh, replacement project, we're waiting for Senate Bill number twenty-four to clear the State House. Uh, the OPM architecture, uh, architect treasurer, chief financial advisor. And I said, met, to review the cash flow projections and plan for any debt service. We may have to ask for some debt to be paid in FY twenty-two, uh, and budgeted for the rest of it for twenty-three. Um, we're gonna be visited next to the time with, uh, by Bill Shea, who will be talking about his ideas for the Vietnam Memorial on the common. Let's see, police car cruiser project is moving forward. Uh, Green Communities, uh, funds are covering the lighting upgrades to the Slade Building. The IT, uh, upgrade is happening through the community compact IT grant. Uh, police ceiling repair project is substantially complete. Municipal vulnerability preparedness grant, we're preparing something with TC to develop a culvert replacement plan. Um, let's see, just touching on a few things. We just heard about Rainbow Playground. Uh, we have some procurements coming up, having to do with the, the assesses, uh, the fire station, uh, rental, this fire station number two rental and public and, uh, construction and public works are being handled by consultants. Um. Departmental functions are FY twenty-one revenues through February look like they're pretty much right on target. Um, and the same with our extended. Uh, they are, uh, right on target, so things look good. And that's about it. If there are other details, but I think you've got the gist of what's going on.
Yeah, thank you. Busy, busy first week or two for you there. Um, as, as far as the, uh, one other thing I just want to bring up during that and some of that, you know, was, was you were copied on today. Had to do with the, uh, the school roof, um, and, um, sort of the status on, um, the funding source for that due to the, uh, legislation that had to get filed, um, based on annual town meeting last year. Um, I know you've got an email today. Margaret Wood, um, called me to discuss, uh, and I sort of asked where things stood with that. Do you have an, I told her I'd sort of talk about it. Do you, do you know where things stand?
The, um, we need to get that Senate Bill number twenty-four through the legislative process.
Yep.
Um, without that, we don't have a legal way to pay for the work that's being done. Um, I had, I reached out to Senator Goby's office this morning, talked to one of her aides. And I've also reached out to Representative Bertham's office and left a message. Uh, but we need to pour on the support, uh, with our legislative delegation to get that Senate bill through. Right now, it's in a committee and, uh, that committee has yet to schedule any hearings. If we can get this done in the next two to three weeks, I think we'll be okay. Anything longer than that, um, we're gonna have to come up with a viable Plan B.
All right, yeah, we can't miss this, especially with the town voting to, to, you know, sort of first, one of the first times ever with the, the way this is being funded. Um, so, all right, um, I think we should probably deal with it then as far as, um, do, writing, writing a letter or something, right? I mean, we, we sort of have to do that, that all of us sign. Um, um, I don't know, what do you think? I mean, would that help?
Uh, definitely will help.
All right, well, I, I'll let me, I'll do that. So, I'll draft something and send it out to everybody, you guys. It's gonna be short and sweet. It just basically says, "The world will end if you don't act on it." So, simple as that. Um, all right, well, the, um, I guess that's the only question I had on that one, and I'll, I'll update Margaret and tell her, uh, tell her that same. Uh, okay, well, thanks for that. Anything else on the, the town administrator side? Or anyone have any questions for David? No? Okay, uh, next is committee updates, um, for the town center committee. Uh, I think I mentioned it last time, but they're, they're in this sort of right-of-way, uh, phase of things now, which is a long process to, um, reach out to a butters and let them know that, you know, six hundred and seventy-four square feet of land is required to perform this. And, and there's a set of negotiations that would go on and, uh, mostly it's just gifted to the town, which I expect will probably happen in, in all, if not all, most of the situations here. And there's a very detailed, uh, right-of-way plan, uh, that everybody can review, uh, who is affected by this or interested in this. And, um, you know, that process is, is a longish one, but we've got a little bit of time and it's begun. So, that's just really the update on the, the town center committee. I don't know if anyone else has any other committee updates they wanna bring up?
Yeah, EDC, don't forget, they have their meet and greet on March twenty-fifth. Um, it's gonna be a Zoom meeting and it will be recorded, obviously, and put on YouTube after, so that way anyone can watch. But last, I just talked with Whitney today and she was saying something about she has like fifty-one questions submitted. So, all the different boards and committees, so that's a good response. And, um, she does have, um, people from all the boards and committees pretty much lined up to be able to answer these specific questions. So, she's gonna get through as many as they can. Um, Lori, the town clerk, is going to moderate. So, but it should be a good meeting and it, I think it will open a lot of people's eyes about what actually can be done in our town, whether it's out of your house or whatever, you know, out of a storefront for businesses. Because a lot of people, I, I hear the same questions over and over again and it's like, yeah, actually you can do that. You'd be surprised. So, hopefully this will open some people's eyes and maybe, um, open up some doors to opportunities.
Okay, great. Yeah, hopefully, um, hopefully we have some pretty good attendance at that. I, I do plan on, uh, jumping in myself just to check it out. Okay, any other committee updates? Anyone's got? Nope. Okay, next item is, is, uh, matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair, chair. I, I just brought one up, um, because it had come up so late and that was about the, uh, the school roof, but we already talked about that. Anybody, anybody have anything else they wanna talk about?
Yeah, I wanna talk about, um, the Google Drive account. I'm struggling to get on the do, Google Drive account where we have our select board folder. Is there somebody who can help me get onto that?
What exactly is the problem that you're having? Is it just gaining access to it as in your username and password are not working? So, they're your G, your, yes, your at Hubbardston MA dot US account is not working. Is that the problem?
Um, I don't know. Maybe it's that I haven't set up an account.
Okay. Okay, all right. So, I know that Katie's also having some problems with her at Hubbardston MA dot US account as well. Are other members also having a problem accessing? I see hands. Okay, is everyone having a problem accessing?
I still go through the old one, so I can still get in through my Hub, Hub Selectman Five account. So, I still have all the, I can see the agenda and everything that you guys have put in there. I tried to do the same for like shared drives, which I have an account, the, like, an active, I can go to Google Drive and all the other stuff and email and it's all sort of there, but nothing's on the Google Drive account.
Okay, is that the same for, for both you, Pat, and Jeff as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so it seems to be across the board. I know that I did share it with everyone's old emails as well as their new, the at Hubbardston MA dot US accounts, so it sounds like it's just not working overall for everyone. Does that sound like the consensus with the Google Drive?
Probably. I don't, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else, but I don't really know what I'm doing when it comes to that stuff. So, um, you know, it is, right, so somebody who, you know, um, it's probably across the board here as far as, you know, something we just probably need to accept or whatever to, to get in.
No, no, it's not. I've sat down with the guy. It is not.
Okay.
And he's been trying to fix mine now, because I sat down, I brought my iPad, I brought my phone and I brought the Chromebook. And even he tried to figure it out. I'm white now, he can't, he's still working on it in the background. So, the, yeah, the email, the new email, it's not working at all. The old email works. I can get into the, the Google Docs and everything from the Chromebook. But, yeah, not getting any of the new, nothing's going to the new email at all.
Okay, is everyone having a problem with this on Chromebooks, laptops, iPads? Um, tell me, is it the same type of machine that is giving the problem? Or is this something that it's across the board with all of these that you're having an issue with?
Chromebook for me.
I, I haven't, sorry, go ahead, Chris. I don't know if we can hear you, Chris.
Just the Chromebook is, um, all I use for accessing that drive. Same here.
Okay, I haven't opened the Chromebook in months, so I have, I don't know whether it goes. But I can get, again, as I said, I can get onto my at Hubbardston MA dot US or whatever it is, email through like a normal browser and Google Drive, no problem. But still, the drive account doesn't have any of the information relative to our meetings or anything like that. So, I don't know what sort of data point that is, but it's something.
Okay, well, at least that gives me more information that it's not just one specific type of machine that's giving a problem and that it seems to be that the emails across the board are not working at all, um, both for the email side as well as accessing the Google Drive side. Does that sound about right?
Well, I get all my emails and I spent, yeah, that first day when the emails came out, I was on the phone and the guy, I actually had the guy at work. He was, you know, and they do that thing where you, they can operate your, and he had to do a ton of stuff to change, like, to be able to transfer all the information and all the other stuff. And it, it was quite a process and it got done. So, I actually have an active email, um, that, that works fine. I don't know if anyone else does, but I get those emails, um, you know, no problem.
Okay, I will definitely reach out to CM Geeks and tell them that this seems to be a, a, an all type of problem that's going on here and try to figure out what exactly the issue is prior to the next meeting, hopefully, that we can get that all straightened out within the next couple of weeks.
All right, yeah, tell them we're furious.
Okay.
Hey, okay, thank you. Okay, any other matters, um, anyone else wanted to bring up?
Nope.
Uh, and, okay, any public or press questions? Anything come into you, Aaron, that you know of? Uh, I don't see anything on the chat, so otherwise.
There were no comments on the Facebook post as well as I did not receive anything. I'm not sure if David received anything, but I didn't hear anything of it.
I've not received anything.
So, nothing as of now.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, we have reached the, uh, reached the end of our meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second the motion.
Okay, that was a race to get the second. Um, we will give it to Katie, because I think I heard that scored out first. Yeah, it is not debatable, uh, as we all know. And we will vote roll call. Dan, yes, uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
And Katie?
Yes.
All right, unanimous, night everyone.